If you tried it, that's almost gonna say if you tried it.
Ah, no, my husband would appreciate it.
It sounds too good to me.
That was a good one.
Well.
He won't let you sit by? He's talking to you. He just doesn't see him on the table. Next to one.
You guys. You've got a time off so much. Oh, okay. You guys do a hell of a job.
How I hate to see you.
Yeah. Tell them to sit there.
No, he's talking to Trudy.
Yeah.
Stan, I mean, it's a good situation. Waiting.
My cop.
Yeah. I know you're coming down. Exchange card.
Initially what you're doing is.
Well, we're starting a shop.
Yeah.
And we need day-to-day patients to call us. So we're looking for.
Yes.
Well.
I hear you real good.
I mean, actually, somebody will buy his.
I was talking about Will here.
Oh, yeah, me. No, we do have one up the street.
Good evening. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Coche?
Here.
Mizek?
Here.
Janudis?
Here.
Fluharty?
Here.
And Saunders?
Here.
Council, you have the minutes of the budget work session of October 28th, 2019. Any changes, corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? Mizek, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the work session of November 18th, 2019. Any changes or corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Fluharty? Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Excite.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of November 18th, 2019. Any corrections or changes to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Rhodes, second by Mizek. Call the roll.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Excite.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
And for old business, we have ordinance number 973819 that we need to remove from the table. A motion for such by Janudis, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
And motion for third and final? Saunders, second by Mizek.
Frank, I'm in. I have a couple of highlights on the appropriation budget for 2020. This year, we have included in there $600,000 for road improvements. We do have police cars that we have budgeted. Our general fund will be around $17.4 million, and our overall funds will be $38.3 million for the year. I asked council to have passed this today, and we'll have that going into effect for 2020. After many different meetings amongst departments, directors, and council, we have a final budget, and we do have a balanced budget.
That's good. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizek?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
And now, council, one of my favorite things. We have a little check here for a group called Meals on Wheels. Diana, if you would please come forward. I know you would please to come forward.
Oh, pretty nice screen.
That's fine. As everybody knows, we certainly support Meals on Wheels here, and they just do such a great thing for people around town and some of the neighboring cities to deliver meals to people that can't get them for themselves. And the employees here have a little program where on a Friday, they get to wear jeans to work if they give a dollar toward Meals on Wheels. And that's a very popular thing. And so with that, city is going to present you with a little check for... $1,000.
$1,000. It's one of the great employees.
And nobody hesitates. I don't know if it's the jeans or the Meals on Wheels. Works out well. Yes.
You know, I gotta tell you something. I can't just walk away and...
And all the people that need $200.
But I had a call today from a woman who told me that she and... One of our residents, that she and her sister and her sister's husband, they live together in a two-bedroom apartment and here in town. All three of them have cancer. They're all in their 70s. And she said, the social workers said, maybe you can help us. Now, that you've... I mean, the three of them are all taking chemo. They're trying to care-take each other. Okay? And so one part of it, when one's kind of sick, the other one's taking care of them. And they said, you know, we were thought, we thought we could buy one meal, and then we'll take turns with this meal. You know, you get it today, I get it two days? I said, no, we're not gonna work that way. And because of the generosity of the employees and the Rotary and the incredible Eagles and a number of, you know, other groups that just goes on, we were able to say, we're going to be able to pay for your meals through our angel fund until we can get them onto the free meal federal program. Three-quarters of our people are on the federal program. They're starting up spaces for everybody that needs them. But we will be able to start their meals, okay, next Monday. And so as they take care of one another, nobody passes out because they haven't eaten two days. But you get a call like that, and all the work is worth it, everything. So I want to thank all of you. It's appreciated for doing this for us year after year. I don't have any idea how many years, but I know it's at least 10, because I've been around that. I appreciate your help.
And pass on to all your volunteers up there. We really appreciate what they do day in and day out up there.
Yeah, they get so much satisfaction that it's the best thing I have ever done. And I know that's the way they feel. 82 of them, and there's always a spot for one more. Mr. Fluharty became a volunteer of ours six months ago. And so we've already got Sandy, and we already have you and Marilyn. And Frank could just, if you let him off for an hour once a week, we could put him to work too. Okay? Thank you so much, though.
Thank you. So we'd like to back up. We'd like to pick you back up.
But wait, there's more. There's more. Christmas.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Pat Cuddy from the fire department. This is Tim Grody.
And I'm short. No, they're tall.
So I've actually never been able to make it on tonight when we presented the check. And I know you've done it for numerous years also. But this is coming from Local 1683, which is the firefighters' union here in Bedford. We're affiliated with the International Association of Firefighters. And our union dues go towards this donation. So we donate, you know, we have dues that go towards a lot of other things inside the firehouse for our eating and our kitchen stuff, Kitchen Kitty. We do some fundraising, but this is always one that we're real proud to present to you. So we'd like to give you a check for $500 towards this program as well.
If you ever get desperate, we'll put your nails.
We'd look funny wearing jeans on Friday, too.
You guys don't count. But you sleep in your daughter.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
And... Doc, there you are. You want to come up here? We have a great event coming up on December 14th, Christmas in Bedford Falls, where we renamed Bedford, Bedford Falls for the afternoon in honor of the old Jimmy Stewart movie, is where we just stole the title, and It's a Wonderful Life and all that. But this is just a proclamation stating that December 14th will be Christmas in Bedford Falls Day. And for those who don't know, Doc spearheads the event. Been doing it for quite a while now. And a lot of work.
Yes, a lot of detail.
And a lot of good helpers, too.
Oh, excellent helpers.
Yeah, awesome. Whereas in the summer of 1999, a small group of people from Bedford met at the Gaslight Inn, 630 Broadway, to discuss promoting the downtown merchants of Bedford during the Christmas holidays. A mission statement was written and reads as follows. The historic downtown business district is the heartbeat of Bedford. If downtown thrives, the community of Bedford will thrive. Whereas in 2000, the name Christmas in Bedford Falls was given to this new Bedford event, taken from the classic movie It's a Wonderful Life, starring Jimmy Stewart and Donnie Reed. By 2001, the Second Saturday of December was established as Christmas in Bedford Falls Day. And whereas this year, on Saturday, December 14th, 2019, Bedford will once again become Christmas in Bedford Falls for the day as we celebrate the Christmas holidays with family, friends, and neighbors. Therefore, I stand, Coche Mayor, City of Bedford, on behalf of city council and administration, to hereby proclaim that the city of Bedford will be known as Christmas in Bedford Falls on Saturday, December 14th.
I have to say this year, thank you so much, Mayor. If it hadn't been for the city picking up this event, 100%, we wouldn't be doing it. So I want to thank you very much for allowing it to continue another year anyhow.
Well, we all know how important it is to the city.
It is. It's a free event for everybody. I've been looking at websites at other communities that have Christmas events, and they're charging people, you know, nominal amounts of money to ride, you know, the wagons and do whatever. But for Bedford, it's all free, and people really appreciate that. And I just wanted to give recognition to the committee this year, it's Mike Malice and Heather and Sandy. And Gina's not here. Who am I missing? Beth is doing Lysol for Hunger.
I can handle it.
And she's going to have her artwork displayed.
I can handle it. I can handle it from Recreation Department.
Oh, yeah, Mike.
Don't forget him.
The two Mikes. Yes, that was fun. That was fun having them to work with.
Good.
And Audie Zegreberg helped out in some things, too. So it's been a real, a good team this year. Small, but mighty.
Well, that's good.
Yep.
And we hope that a lot of people from all over come in to visit our shops downtown.
Yes, that's the whole point of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Doc. And as Diana mentioned, the Eagles Club helps donate to a lot of these functions, especially the Meals on Wheels. We also found out they gave Mike a check for $2,000 to give to the Bedford Historical Society. So we'll be taking that over there this week. Spirit of giving, it's all good. Okay, reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of items real quick. First and foremost, I just want to take a minute and commend all of our staff, as well as the fire department. And I know we say this often, but we have a tremendous group of individuals that work for us. And most importantly, that care about our town. And what they give back in ways like this, and there's many others, it's, you know, kudos to them. I appreciate it. I also wanted to thank Frank Gambosi for his efforts during our budget process. You know, it's always a challenging few months, and we had some fun debates and debates with our departments. But, you know, we wouldn't have gotten to where we've gotten over the last six-plus years to have a balanced budget, to be increasing our infrastructure from, as far as our road program, from $400,000 to $600,000, to, you know, being able to purchase the fire equipment that we're planning to do. You know, those things don't happen by accident. And Frank, I appreciate the time you put in. I know it's hours and hours. And, you know, once again, great job, and looking forward to 2020. We definitely have some good things planned. I want to mention that December 14th, there's a couple of events going on. One, obviously, Christmas in Bedford Falls. And we also have our annual Shop with a Cop. And our police department does a great job putting that on. You know, we actually have donations that can help. I think we've exceeded 25, 30 children in the community. If anybody's still looking to donate, please touch base with our police department. Again, that event is on the 24th. And Diana, thank you for all you do, and I wanted to add that. Really appreciate taking care of, you know, those that need a little pick-me-up. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Law Director.
Just echo what Michael said, and also he's being kind of humble. He's putting a lot, a lot of time in this as well, so I thank everybody. And thank you all for coming. Thank you to Meals on Wheels, and thank you to the Christmas, Christmas in Bedford Falls Committee. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director.
Just a couple of comments regarding fire. I appreciate that every year they do match with that $500. They've done that for quite a while. We've been involved, I believe, since 1991, '92, which really early. We've been starting that program. And the employees do enjoy the trust on the end, the purpose to what they give. And also, Diana, I give you a lot of kudos in running a business. Huge what you do. People don't realize how big that program is and all the things that you do. So thank you for that. We talked about the budget already. My equipment, that was big time. That we're doing this year on the fire. So with that, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Before we do council, I want to go first this time, because I... Every time I go last, everything's been said.
He's a boss.
Mike, was there any... Are they going off to kind of branches after that big windstorm we had?
We did pick, we did pick some up. Are there certain areas or...
No, just in general, if they've got...
Yeah, if we see them out, we try to throw them in the back of the truck. I mean, we have, we don't have the chipper out right now, but if there's some large, large limbs that are out there, some other items that we're able to get, we can. If there's some access, is that, or some areas, let me know, and I'll see what we can do.
I just wanted to see. You know, that truck gets taken out of service for repairs. And also, leaf pickup is continuing. We'll totally get most of the leaves. And of course, that windstorm helped spread all of the leaves all over the city again, so people had to re-rake them. But so that's, that'll be going on. Also, we had a great tree lighting ceremony, in spite of the weather. It's kind of touch and go whether we were even going to have it. Came pretty close to canceling it because of the weather conditions and the wind. And they were talking about 60 mile an hour wind gusts, and, you know, we didn't have, want to have a tree branch fall and cause a problem. But with Mike and the two chiefs, and Clint and Sean from the service department, we sat there for about 45 minutes, right up to the last minute where we could cancel it, but decided to go ahead with it. Things kind of, like, calmed down. And we had a great night. The weather was not a factor. It was cold, but it was dry. And again, it was, it was fun. And Tracy's daughter got to flip the switch for us. She was a little excited to do that. She flipped it before we counted down. But that's okay. She's, what, four?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's cute. And so that was a lot of fun to do that. And thanks again to the fire department for doing the hot chocolate and donut holes. That's always a good thing. Plus, they bring in Santa Claus on the fire truck. The kids look forward to that. And also, on Friday, after Thanksgiving, we had a little memorial service for Joyce Dodge. Her family, because of Thanksgiving, they were all in town, so that's why we picked Friday morning to... We had a plaque made up for Joyce, so if you leave here and you look at the flower garden right out front of the main doors, you'll see a nice plaque in honor of Joyce. It's just a small token for the stuff she's done for the city over the years. She's always been one of those steadfast people we can count on. If we needed a volunteer for something, and she put her whole heart and soul into this. It was always about other people, not herself. Even the, the week before she passed, I got a phone call from her where she was pretty ill at the time. And so I said, Joyce, how you doing? She said, eh, I'm dealing with something. That's not why I called you. There's, they want to put a mural on the building down in Bedford, and I need your help to get it done. And that was just days before she passed, and she was still worried about doing stuff for other people. And a great lady that we're, we surely miss. But take a look at the plaque, it was really nice, and I might come up with a nice saying to put on there, and it was very appropriate. And let's go to council, Mrs. Rhodes.
Good evening, everyone. We're a little sparse tonight. I think cold weather has kept everyone away, but thank you for coming. I only have one announcement tonight. First Friday is this upcoming Friday. It is our last First Friday of the year. We won't be resuming until March. The theme of this one is local organizations, so you can come down, get a free hot dog, learn a little bit about the local organizations, such as Meals on Wheels, Garden Club, the library, those type of things, and just have a nice time. We hope to see you there. Thank you very much.
Where's it going to be?
It's going to be downtown Bedford downtown.
Oh, just downtown?
Yeah. So...
Okay.
Downtown Bedford.
I didn't know if you were particularly passionate.
Nope, but we just try to spread it throughout downtown so that people can experience everything that we have in downtown.
What time is it?
Six to nine. Although this, late in the year, it's probably going to be six to 7:30, 8:00. So...
That's brand age, eh?
Yep.
Thank you. This is Spinks.
And just, I want to give a big thank you again to our service department for the outstanding job once again that they did on the square with the lighting. I know Mike personally thinks the guys called them up, but this just, it's so amazing. Each year, they add something to it, and it's, I bless every year, our granddaughters, who are seven and nine, come up from New York. And it's, they didn't want to go downtown Cleveland, they want to go downtown Bedford to see what we had, and they, they played their favorite part, was the hugging bear. And that was kind of my favorite part, too. And so that's really cool. So I wanted to give a good kudos to those guys again. They do so much. And our fire department, that's so awesome, them giving the hot chocolate out and the donut holes and what all they do. And a big thank you to the Eagles. That's much-needed money to the Historical Society, and we appreciate them at Meals on Wheels. And I was so glad that I was able to coerce our mayor and his lonely wife on being my driver for Meals on Wheels, when one of them can't do it, the other one does it. So I appreciate y'all doing that. So I'm still trying to get us some more.
Keep working.
I am, I am. Christmas in Bedford Falls next week, 12 to 4. The Historical Society will be open. Over at Dunham House will be the Christmas of the 1800s. Like, so when you walk in, Dean Saper and Terry Blair will be there, and he greet you like you're walking into the 1800s, the Christmas that they would have there. So again, that's 12 to 4. We've got some new things going on. We're real excited, so you have to come down and see. Nature Stone's got some new stuff in there. And Beth, our very own Beth over here, is going to have her beautiful photography. You're going to be at...
Don't fight her, is that how you say it?
The real estate? Okay, you'll find her. So make sure you get down there, and end of report.
Thank you. This is Mizek.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and early Merry Christmas. I first would like to start my report with a thank you to Diana for all she does. The money is well-deserved and put very good use. I would have loved to have been one of your volunteers, but I have my hands full right now at the present time, so you may catch me in a scrape, but it's okay. I want to say that the firemen always donate to you, to a special cause. And by getting that additional check, I'm sure you saw that they really love you, what you do, too. I want to say thank you to our service department for the excellent job they did up at the square. I've only been there four times since we put the lights on. I brought a couple of people up to see the lighting. I love the large light bulbs that are red and green and the white hoops with the paint with the, with the panicking decor. What's the extra special touch? Clint, Sean Francis, Tony Romito, and other guys from the service department, all need a... I don't know if it's a raise or this, but they do, they certainly be thankful. I want to thank them again for their hard efforts and everything. The only thing I'm going to say right now is we have this beautifully lit building now with the lights for the holidays. Are you planning on putting a little greenery around?
We're getting there.
Okay.
We're getting there.
I mean, when I go in the driveway, I saw the lights at the mirror lights at the corner of Broadway and Columbus there at the telephone store. I said, oh, they're at the top of our building now. So I'm sure that they're an eye catcher for us. But we'll take them any way we can have them, and I'm sure that they'll do a good job, just as well as they did at this square. I've also heard by a couple of people, and they're kind of excited, they got notification from the Villa San Bordinos about coming, they're going to be moving closely or pretty soon. And I was going to ask you how the practice was going on that, but since now they're just already notifying some of the residents, it's going to be a pretty beautiful place to live. And that's still in their neighborhood, so we want them here, and that'll be great. So we want them here and that'll be great. Another thing we need to know, a little update on the Sanoco gas station at the corner of Lee and Turnabout, which is in?
What for? Correct. We actually, our Building Department, I believe, is scheduled, they called and requested an inspection. Actually, it's, it might be tomorrow. It's this week. They requested inspections this week. They do have the pumps on order. Probably the earliest, they're shooting for mid-January to open, but more realistically is probably early February.
Okay, only because one of my apartment dwellings had their December meeting this morning, about noon today, and they asked for an update. And I said, I'll get this back to their president of the association so they could all be happy at the end of the street. We're all going to be back here, all of us, the same bunch, starting January of 2020. 2020, I can't believe it, we're there, we're here that long, we're ready. It's a good experience. And I want to say thank you again to my constituents. And I want to say to the audience, whether we have a full house or not, we're here to serve you. We're here to take care of your concerns, do the best job we can in the best fashion we can, and keep the harmony and peace in our city as best we can too. Have a good holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus?
End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty?
I didn't have a whole lot to say, but nothing's going on in my ward, except you want to question on that San Bernardo, the retreat house is opening up soon. It isn't open yet. It's the closest building that's going to be open. The other ones won't be open until probably spring. So I talked to Richard and the Building Department because I had some concern if somebody wanted, they're on the list to get in there and they're not giving them any answers. He says, until they're ready, then they'll call the Building Department and then they'll okay everything and then they can move in. So it could be next week, it could be next month. So answer your question on that.
Well, the two individuals that were both called from?
Yeah, they have a list. So people are ready to move in.
Were already called and we guys are getting ready to go.
Right. They're just waiting on the final okay.
Thank you.
But Diana is in my ward, so I got something else to talk about. So thank you for all the work you do and the dedication and hard work. I am a volunteer and all I do is show up, collect the meals and deliver them. And I get to go home. She does this all the time, all day long. And her husband, Don, who no one's mentioned, is in the corner over there. He does help out a little bit. Just a little bit. But the two of yous do a lot of work for that organization. And now that I'm a part of it, it's really, you need to do it just to understand what really goes on and what, how many people it affects. I got a route that people all know me now. And I got a couple of guys that want to talk football, basketball, and baseball, and I can't get to the next person because they want to talk for a half hour. But they're, they're, you're the one person they might see all day. And so it's, it's gratifying to, to work with these people. And guys do a good job. I think that's it. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Yeah, first off, now that the election has been certified and I will be returning in January, I want to thank all the constituents in Ward 6 that helped out in this election. I didn't get to campaign the way I would have liked to because my mother passed away in June, my father almost passed away in July, and I had kidney stones and a double infection in August. So the summer was pretty well blown away. So it was a very close election, but ended up winning in the end. So I want to thank everybody who helped out during this time period. The other thing that I want to bring up tonight is I want to publicly give my condolences to the St. John family. Many of you probably already know that Lois St. John, the wife of Chuck St. John, the funeral home down there at Broadway, passed away last Wednesday. The funeral was today. She was extremely actively involved in everything. Not necessarily all just the city, but Benedictine High School for sure. They lost a very good volunteer, although she hasn't been able to be actively involved as much in the last couple of years. It was amazing to see the list of the stuff that she has accomplished in her lifetime with her eight kids and numerous grandkids. So I wanted to give my public, or publicly, give my condolences to the St. John family. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, she was just a terrific lady. Let's get on to new business. Ordinance number 9746-19.
There's an ordinance establishing the Archibald Willard Park Pavilion rental rules, regulations, and fees and declaring an emergency.
And we, we want to put that on first reading, have motion for such. Fluharty, second by Janutus. The Archibald Willard Park, that's the gazebo at the Olive Wood Rep Center. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9747-19.
There's a mending ordinance number 9646-18 pertaining to section 1105.03 entitled Fees, Deposits, and Charges Regarding the Recreation Centers Programs and Usage and Declaring an Emergency.
And just to be clear, we're not changing any fees, just changing some language on how things are handled down there. So fees will stay the same. And again, we want to put that on first reading, motion for such by Mizak, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
And see the motion?
Yes, I can, I get a motion to deny the application of Donald Smith for operation of a business at 348 Broadway Avenue, seeking a conditional use approval for a training and event center from the Planning Commission due to lack of prosecution, which means just lack of pursuit of the motion, of the application. So can I get a motion to that effect?
Motion by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Motion, yes, you agree with denying it, no, you don't agree to deny it. Just to be clear. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
No.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
Motion to approve, oh, the next motion.
Is, I guess, kind of get a motion to approve the Planning Commission's decision to deny extreme renovation representing U-Haul's operation at 19000 Rockside Road, seeking approval to install a truck return canopy and a liquid propane above-ground dispenser tank due to their lack of prosecution or pursuit of the application.
And again, yes, as you agree with the Planning Commission's decision to deny their request, a no would be you do not agree with their decision to deny their request. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
And E. So can I get a motion to approve the Planning Commission's decision to accept the site, plan approval of Nancy Kennedy Architect representing, I don't know if I'm saying this right, Viwi Path LLC, proposing an exterior alteration to the existing structure located at 595 Broadway, Broadway Avenue, formerly known as Mr. G's for the operation of an insurance business related services. Yes, you agree with the motion to approve and no, you disagree with the motion to approve. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes.
That passes. Mr. Barrett, if you'd stand, this is Mike Barrett, the new owner of that building. We'll quit calling it Mr. G's now.
All right.
So that's Mr. Barrett. Mr. Barrett. Could be a great addition to our city if you want to say a couple of words.
Yes, I, well, I just, I'd love to, I just want to thank council. Thank you, Mayor. I, a couple of years ago, I sought Bedford out and deliberately wanted to move here. And I ended up realizing I was way over my head trying to figure it out. And I sent Mike an email and he responded. And Jennifer Kuzma just led me through this. And we're just really grateful. I have a really good team. We're really excited to come to Bedford and want to be good citizens and make the property really attractive for us and for the city and for others. And I just can't believe it worked out the way it did. So thanks so much, Mike.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome. And now it comes to unfortunately, hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment.
My name's Beth Jose O'Steer, 93 Avalon. Before I talk about Lights Out for Hunger, I did want to do a little side note. I had a mismanaged 911 call this summer. And boy, do I love your new chief. He is professional. He is kind. Within 10 minutes of the phone call to him to tell him what happened, I had an email response from him and he took care of the situation. So, you know, we fought hard to get additional officers and we have a new chief. And I don't know that people always come up here and say thank you, but boy, I'm impressed with him. I think we're in good shape.
Thank you. We'll pass that along to him.
Yeah, I told him about it. It's good to say it on record because, you know, our police force, I mean, the city, I almost cried when Diana told the story about those three people in that apartment. I mean, we do have a lot of good things that happen here and they're not always recognized. So good chief there. I came to talk about Lights Out for Hunger, even though everyone in this room probably knows about it, it's still recorded. So I want to get the news out because it wasn't a super huge crowd at the tree lighting. But Lights Out for Hunger is starting its ninth year. The idea came from a local resident who said, if everybody in the country turned off their holiday lights even one night, think of the electricity that could be saved. And then we could donate that back to hunger centers. So that's how the idea started nine years. And the city's always been very supportive of it. I appreciate the advertising and the turning off the lights. So on December 18th, Bedford, Oakwood, and Walton Hills will turn off their holiday lighting display. And then you donate, really, if you have children, the concept of donating your electricity savings, I think, is most pertinent to children. Because when the lights are out, and our kids love our displays, you know, they're driving by and, hey, Mom or Dad, why are the lights out tonight? That's such an important thing. And they don't always know that. We all in this room have food every night at our supper table. That isn't the case for everybody in our community. So it's a good lesson for the children to see, okay, we turn off the lights, turn it into a math lesson, but it's so much more. It teaches them to give to others. So if you don't have children, you can happily just write out a check and we'll be pleased. We also advertise at Bedford Falls. But I just wanted to remind everybody, it's December 18th. I brought some extra flyers. If somebody has a business or if you want to pass them out, we really did not pass out the number we usually do with the lighting, probably because of the wind. So we always need help with volunteers and we always need help with advertising. And Auntie's always been wonderful since she's been at the desk. And I appreciate everything that you did and that you do for Lights Out for Hunger. And I'll be here at the meeting in two weeks if anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Great idea. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing, and motion for adjournments. By Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And Saunders?
Yes. Well, thank you all for coming.